Good evening and welcome everyone to this April 15th Public Hearing Evening. But before we begin the official business, we have a couple of treats for everybody. The first, I just want to make a quick announcement which is to alert you all to the fact that May is officially Bike Month and that I have proclaimed May 2019 to be Bike Month in the City of Eugene. So this is a little heads up to get ready. Get your helmets out and check online for the events and the opportunities that the city is presenting for you to take advantage of our 80 miles of on-street bike lanes, 40 miles of shared-use paths, and the new one-and-a-half-mile protected bikeway on East Amazon Drive. And just to give you a heads up of how successful our Peace Health Rides Bike Share has been, it has provided over 10,000 individuals more than 150,000 trips with a reduction of 165,465 pounds of carbon dioxide in the past year. So that's pretty great. So enjoy, participate, get on those bikes, and be safe for your helmet.
And the mayor promises it won't rain the entire month.
And I promise the weather will, the sun will shine in the City of Eugene, so.
Easy now.
Even if you can't see it.
Careful there.
Very, very, very good. So more to come, I'll remind you all in May, but I wanted you to have a little foretaste of that. And now we are thrilled and delighted to recognize a very special group of student athletes, the University of Oregon Women's Basketball Team, who have all graced us with their presence today. Since the arrival of Coach Kelly Graves, in 2014, the Ducks have won two Pac-12 season championships and one Pac-12 tournament championship. In 2017 and 2018, the Ducks made it to the Elite Eight in the NCAA tournament, and on April 5th, 2019, the Oregon Ducks Women's Basketball Team appeared in its first NCAA Final Four game in program history, capping a season of unprecedented success. In addition to the team's overall success, the athletes garnered individual recognition and achievements, including numerous conference and NCAA records and prestigious national and Pac-12 awards. Community support for this exciting team has been building steadily, with attendance at Matt Knight Arena growing from an average of 1,000 fans to over 7,000 fans in the space of just three years. And I wonder if you would all be willing to come forward?
We're gonna have to stand up.
I have to get my microphone here so I can stand up. We are extremely proud of the way you have represented your school, your families. Ah, that's better. Thank you. We are extremely proud of the way you have represented, oh, and candy!
Sorry, the candy.
That's right. Welcome to the City of Eugene.
Knock yourself out, man. Right on.
We are so proud of the standards of sportsmanship and teamwork you collectively model and you are to be celebrated. We wish you well in your future academic and athletic endeavors, and we thank you for allowing us to honor you in this way. So I will introduce the team here. Ati Gildan, Maite Kazorla, Sabrina Yanescu, Ruthie Hebert, Satu Sabali, and Niara Sabali. And thank you all so much for being here. And we have some coaching staff. Mark Campbell, Jody Berry, Chabi Lopez, Megan Lopez, and Nia Jackson. And now, just, we're gonna have a quick video to show some highlights of the season, and then we'll offer a little award antipodes.
Watch a couple games now.
It's gonna come down, you know, who just plays harder and is tougher, and ultimately somebody's gonna have to make some plays to win the game.
Now, behalf of the Women's Basketball Committee, it's our pleasure to welcome the University of Oregon to Tampa in the final four.
This is what we work for, this is what we dream of, and now it's time to make our dreams a reality. And so we're gonna come out tomorrow, dialed in, ready, ready to go, and not let this opportunity slip away because it is a great one.
Thank you. 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 Thank you all for just being such wonderful examples of human beings and athletes, and honoring our wonderful city with your great success and team spirit and community mindedness. So here is our certificate of appreciation. University of Oregon Women's Basketball Team, 2018-19 Pac-12 Season Champions, 2019 NCAA Final Four Team, in recognition and celebration of your exceptional accomplishments and contributions to the community.
Thank you. Thank you.
There you go. All right. Everybody is. Nice ladies.
Thanks.
You guys rock. Go Ducks!
Good job, Ricky.
Go Ducks.
As an award, you do not have to stay.
You want my microphone back?
That was fun. Good job.
Next fun item.
Okay, now, now, we're ready.
Item two.
For item two. It feels so anticlimactic, sorry. All right, item two, Public Hearing and Possible Action: An Ordinance Concerning Appointment of Presiding Municipal Judge and Amending Section 2.011 of the Eugene Code 1971. Manager, do you want to speak to this at all? Do we have anybody signed up?
If you want me to, just for people that might tune in later, just give you a quick what this is about. This public hearing is an opportunity for the public to comment on a proposed ordinance that would amend the code to allow for the hiring of the municipal court presiding judge as either a city employee or as an independent contractor. Currently, the code only allows for the hiring of this role as an independent contractor, and the proposed ordinance has the option of hiring the judge as a city employee.
Okay, and no one has signed up, so I'm closing that public hearing. I guess I'll gavel. And we'll now move on. What's that? Oh, we could take action. Oh, excuse me, I'm jumping ahead. Yes. So are there any questions or comments from the council, and any objection to taking action tonight? No? All right. So, Council President, I will let you put a motion right here.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5204, An Ordinance Concerning Appointment of Presiding Municipal Judge and Amending Section 2.011 of the Eugene Code 1971.
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and it passes, none opposed. Thank you very much. I will now open the second public hearing, An Ordinance Adopting Hazardous Substance User Fees for the Fiscal Year Commencing July 1, 2019, and Providing for an Immediate Effective Date. Do we have anyone signed up for this one? No. Manager, do you want to just describe it?
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the city charter, the Toxic's Right to Know Board has made its annual recommendations to the hazardous substance user fees schedule, and this user fee is paid by businesses and funds the Toxic's Right to Know program, which keeps residents informed about the use and disposition of hazardous substances. To minimize the impact on our business community, program costs are continuously evaluated to ensure the lowest possible fees, and this year it includes almost 4.9% reduction of the fee per FTE from last year. And tonight's material recommends a fee schedule for 2019.
Any questions or comments from council? Any objection to taking action tonight? All right.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5205, An Ordinance Adopting Hazardous Substance User Fees for the Fiscal Year Commencing July 1, 2019, and Providing for an Immediate Effective Date.
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All right, that passes, none opposed. All right, that closes that. Now we're ready for action, An Ordinance Concerning Unlawful Transfer on Vehicular Portion of Right-of-Way, Adding Section 5.170 to the Eugene Code 1971, and Amending Section 5.990 of that code. So, manager?
I can briefly introduce it, and I'm sure you won't have much discussion on this one either. City Council directed the city manager to draft an ordinance that mirrors Springfield's unlawful transfer to vehicular portion of the right-of-way ordinance. The proposed ordinance prohibits drivers and passengers in vehicles from passing items to pedestrians unless the vehicle is legally parked. Currently, a pedestrian stepping into the roadway can be cited. Per Springfield Police Department, they have not cited anyone for unlawful transferring, but instead has used the contact as an educational tool.
Okay. Everybody?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5203, An Ordinance Concerning Unlawful Transfer on Vehicular Portion of Right-of-Way, Adding Section 5.170 to the Eugene Code 1971, and Amending Section 5.990 of the code.
Second.
Discussion, I have Counselor Clark, Counselor Syret, Counselor Yay. Okay, take it away, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked for this discussion and this vote to address something that has been raised by a number of my constituents, but also to have a different kind of conversation in our community. Some of the issues that surround this question have been plaguing our community for an awfully long time, and by the word plaguing, I mean it's an issue and a problem for an awful lot of people. And the whole discussion around homelessness is one where we keep coming up with things, and we're not, we're not heading in a direction that seems to be solving it, it seems to be getting worse. And I've looked around at what other cities have done, and I've looked at what neighboring Oregon cities have done, and this seemed like something to try. And I actually hate saying this out loud, but in the words of one of my colleagues, it's certainly not a silver bullet, but it's a part of silver buckshot, I think, of some things that we can be doing, and I love that I get to make Alan laugh at that one. Number one, we're spending millions of dollars, according to staff, the other, just the other day's meeting, to redesign our roadways to minimize the interaction with pedestrians, and we're doing nothing about the actions of pedestrians. For me, this makes sense for us to address. And there's also another issue, and it's more important, and it's, for me, illustrated by a lot of the emails, the form emails we've gotten from the folks at the ACLU, that are titled "Don't Outlaw Kindness." And I have to tell you, there's nothing about the idea of giving folks that are panhandling money that seems compassionate to me. There's absolutely nothing compassionate and kind about enabling people to stay stuck in dysfunction. There's nothing compassionate about that. If you've got an alcoholic, you don't give him gallons of liquor. I had a friend when I was young, I'm gonna run out of time, I had a friend years ago, a young lady who was abused as a little girl by her grandfather, and her coping mechanism as a young woman was to cut herself. And there wasn't anyone who loved her who recommended that she have knives, because that was her coping mechanism. The people who loved her said, "Stop it, you're hurting yourself." That was the compassionate response. And for me, this is one of those issues. I don't see it as compassionate for us to be enabling folks to stay stuck in dysfunction. So I just wanted to try and change the conversation.
Counselor Syret.
Thank you. Well, I've spoken out against this ordinance previously. I believe it's actually a proxy ordinance for unconstitutional action of preventing citizens from speaking to one another in the public venue, and it can be challenged on constitutional grounds just as it stands. A member of the public tonight pointed out to me a ruling that just happened in Portland, Maine, which would not be in our Ninth Circuit Court, of course, but found a very similar ordinance to be unconstitutional. I did not get to read the whole article, so I can't provide more detail, but it was a challenge brought by the ACLU in Maine. I don't believe that this is a solution to any of the real issues of people in need. I don't believe it is a good use of our public resources to have our public safety officers enforcing this kind of ordinance. We have much larger issues for them to be dealing with. And we had a current Springfield city councilor come to speak at public forum about this ordinance that he believes his city should repeal and that he believes is unconstitutional. And those emails we received may have been prompted by the ACLU, but they were from our constituents who sent us that message. And I don't believe it's up to the council to use public resources to mediate personal interactions between people who are asking for help and who would like to provide help, whatever our opinion is of how helpful that interaction is for that individual. So I'm urging my fellow councilors to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Counselor Yay.
Thank you. Initially, I was supportive of this ordinance, and it's been hard for me to decide what to do. I've seen unsafe interactions between drivers and panhandlers, but as I listened to people and read their emails, it became apparent that this effort is about a lot more than just panhandling. We're all frustrated with the negative behaviors that are often associated with homeless residents. Camps along roadsides in our parks, trash along the Willamette River, people congregating in areas that block and intimidate walkers and bikers, businesses dealing with human waste and needles and theft, vandalism, and aggressive individuals, and residents dealing with many of the same issues outside their homes. And many residents are out or they're running out of patience. But these concerns that were expressed won't change with this ordinance, and enforcement would require our officers to spend their valuable time writing tickets, and it's just time they simply don't have. Our community is working for real solutions for the long term, but long-term solutions aren't quick fixes, and it's gonna take time. But looking back at panhandling, I don't think criminalizing charity is the answer. But giving to panhandlers isn't necessarily either, which has been a problem for me. We need to find a way to direct that compassion in a way that donors can know their money will get the results that they are looking for, and educate them that driving distractions are dangerous for them, the drivers around them, and especially bikes and pedestrians. I think education aimed at encouraging safe driving and donation options would be effective, and it has been used in other areas. Signage at heavy traffic intersections and possibly donation boxes in high-foot traffic areas have been used in other communities to address some of these issues. And I know people want us to do something, but I also want to be careful that we're doing the right something. So I'd like to ask the city manager, and maybe I need to do a work session poll, to look at the feasibility of some of these signage and other educational solutions to panhandling, rather than using an ordinance that causes it to be criminalized. I think this issue really highlights the immediate need for more funds for our public safety system. And council has asked Chief Skinner in the past to let us know what you need to solve these problems, and he's told us he needs more resources. So I hope this will encourage our discussion on how to get those resources quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, this issue was brought forward ostensibly as a public safety issue, and can staff please address the issue if the city or any jurisdiction in the immediate area keeps statistics about traffic accidents or injuries related to, or directly related to, people handing things to pedestrians along the side of the road from their car?
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Bills, Eugene Police. And to answer Councilman Zelenka's question, there are no stats that currently exist. We asked our partners in Springfield what they had, and they didn't have anything. Checked with ODOT, and there's no crash data available specific to this. Checked with NHTSA, National Highway Safety Traffic Association, there was nothing. Went and reached out to the insurance agencies, because a lot of these crashes, if they did occur, would be low speed and minimal injury, so they wouldn't start a DMV file, for example. And they didn't have any information either. All we have are anecdotal stories of near misses or slight rear-end collisions, but nothing much that we've been able to find. So there is no statistical data.
Right. Yeah, I didn't think there was, because I don't necessarily think that that's, that is as big an issue as some people would think it was. The reason this was brought forward was that public safety issue, and it could not be brought forward as an anti-panhandling ordinance, because that would be clearly unconstitutional. And while I appreciate the frustration people have with panhandling, I haven't supported this from the get-go, because I thought it was unconstitutional. I don't support it now, and I urge my fellow councilors not to support it. I think what we need to do is work on the root causes of all of this stuff, which is two things, poverty and homelessness. And we are working on both of those things on many fronts, and so I encourage the council and the city to keep on that track and not get diverted into this path.
Okay, Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. I have also been in a quandary, similar to Counselor Yay, over this issue. I initially was supportive of it, because I don't, I don't think that the level of panhandling we have is a good thing, and I think we need something more constructive and more deliberate in order to deal with, with a problem. And I think if you try to stop compassion, it's very difficult. If we can figure out a way to channel compassion, that's a much better strategy to use. But I think the real conflict for me was, this was being presented as a way to promote traffic safety. And I don't sense that there is a traffic safety issue. Anecdotally, I appreciate Lieutenant Bills trying to look for information, that was great that you went and did that, but it just shows that we don't really have a passes-the-smell-test traffic safety issue that needs to be addressed. So we're back to what 90% of the emails and communications that I had, and even conversations right up here at this table, always seem to circle back to panhandling, which is a constitutionally protected action. So I can't use this mechanism, because trying to use traffic safety as a backdoor way to deal with hand, with panhandling, isn't really something I'm comfortable with. With that said, I am absolutely supportive of doing something about panhandling. Within the framework of the Constitution, as Counselor Zelenka says, there are long-term solutions, but I would also seek to find some short-term solutions as well. And I think there may be some short-term solutions if we apply our collective certified smart people to the problem. I think we can try to come up with some solutions that don't violate the Constitution, but still get at the real problem and not the one we've cobbled together to try to deal with it. So I can't support this one, but I will support any effort to try to come up with a reasonable and constitutionally legal way to deal with what I consider to be a problem.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. I do think this is a safety issue. I just, I don't know how many people watched it, but we got a video from Salt Lake City who just, where they just passed an ordinance to, which is much stronger than this, than we were considering, I think. But some people, one said to me, well, people have said here, "How many accidents have happened? We don't wait till a child is killed before we do something to make a school zone safe." And I think this is obviously an unsafe practice to have people standing in the right-of-way and people stopping their cars to give money to them. And as far, as far as comp- But some people once said to me, well, people have sat here, "How many accidents have happened? We don't wait till a child is killed before we do something to make a school zone safe." And I think this is obviously an unsafe practice to have people standing in the right-of-way and people stopping their cars to give money to them. And as far, as far as compassion is concerned, there are many other ways to give to people. You could give to Food for Lain County, you can give to St. Vinnie's, to the mission, to any of the churches that feed people, or you can give to people who are on the streets downtown. But having people pass things to people from cars to people standing there is not safe. When I was running for office, some of my, some of my supporters decided to stand in the right-of-way, and the police came by and told them they couldn't stand there because it wasn't safe. And I don't think it's safe for people begging for money either. And I'm disappointed to hear people saying they're not going to vote for this. I think it just makes sense. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Semple.
I was never gonna vote for this. I did vote for the public hearing, because I think it's critical that everybody who wants to address the subject could be heard. I don't think it's constitutional. I don't want to waste the staff time to face the challenge, because I think we all know that in Eugene, if we pass this, we'll probably be challenged tomorrow. I do think it's a free speech issue, and I don't think we should pass it. I think Springfield has worked so far, because they haven't issued any tickets. So there's no challenges. This is the wrong thing to do. Thank you.
Any other? Counselor Zelenka, second round here.
One more comment. All of the things that we face as a city with regard to homelessness and poverty, and the symptoms that that brings forward, whether it be panhandling, or people camping out in our right-of-way, or making terrible camp messes in parks and on the river, riverbank, all of that is a symptom of the immense amount of inequity we have in our society, the amount of poverty and inequity, and lack of opportunities, and therefore creating homelessness. That system has taken a long time to bake, and it's not something we're gonna change overnight by doing this or doing that. What we've been doing at the City of Eugene is taking a very systematic approach, silver buckshot approach, of doing a whole bunch of things to try to get us to where we can start to winnow down this, the amount of homeless people we have. We finally have in, in an opportunity with the tax report, with a plan that actually lays out a path to get us to near zero homelessness in this area. And, and that's not gonna be an easy path to take. It's not gonna be terribly expensive, but it's not gonna be inexpensive either. But it is gonna take some time. And so, something that has baked for 30, 40, 50, 60 years doesn't get solved overnight. And so, we've been winnowing away at it, and we're gonna continue to win away at it. I think we're gonna win that battle eventually, but it's gonna take some time, and there's no easy fix to it that's gonna be quick, that gets you the immediate gratification that people want. Or some people just want it to go away, if they don't have to look at it, don't have to see it, don't have to do anything about it. Well, it doesn't work like that either.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wasn't gonna speak to that larger point until my friend Counselor Zelenka decided to, so I'll, I'll say that I agree with much of what he said as to causation. But there's one critically different thing, and I think it's, it bears part of this conversation. We have a worse problem than other communities do. There are several communities on the West Coast that have a similarly large-scale problem with homelessness, but ours is bigger than many other communities, many, 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 by proportion. And one of the reasons is our approach. And yes, we are doing many things, in my opinion, that are right. We are doing many things to provide service and to try and ameliorate the horrible circumstances that folks go through. But one of the things we're not doing is taking a look at how we enable folks to stay stuck in that place. And we are. There are things we do that enable people who don't particularly want to get well to stay stuck. And I think we won't see large-scale solutions, ever, unless we take that part of the silver buckshot and add it to our formula. Until then, we're only shooting with one barrel, so.
Counselor Taylor.
I don't think there's any evidence that all those people standing on corners are homeless. For some people, it's just a way to make a living. And I've been told by people who I trust, who I think know, and of course, you'll say this is anecdotal, but that there are people who, who control the ones, decide who gets which corner and get part of the money from them. But they can make a lot of money that way, they can make more money that way than they can make working in some cases. But that's beside the point. I do think it is a safety issue, and I'm sorry that we apparently are not going to pass it.
You and me, Betty.
Okay, I think we are ready, are we ready for a vote? Everyone's had a chance to say what they need to say? All right. We've already put this on the table, so, all in favor? One, two-
You didn't wanna vote in favor? I didn't think you did, here.
All in favor? Two. Opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six. So it goes down, and thank you very much, and that is, closes our meeting. We are adjourned.